Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the property meeting of the William Penn School District on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, this evening, we have some uh interesting um things to share regarding some of our um. Facility upgrades and I'm gonna pass the floor over to Mister Kaufman to get us going.
Great, thank you, Dan. Um, the agenda is listed as below. Um, we already did the introduction with Mister Tom. Uh, and I'll go over the facilities master plan updates. Uh, we can have some discussion afterward and then we will adjourn. So the facility master plan updates will consist of the Pennwood High School, Ninth Grade Academy, East Lansdowne and Evans Elementary Schools, as well as um. The athletic complex, uh, Pembwood High School update. Preliminary designs have been shared with us for by developed that were developed by KCBA. Uh, we scheduled a design committee meeting for for Wednesday, uh, and there will be bi-weekly meetings from this point on to refine the design. Presentation of the preliminary design will be made at the next property committee meeting and then presentation to the full board will be made on October twenty-third business meeting. Um, and again, that still may be refined, but that it's kind of, I don't wanna call it the final design, but it should be the general uh design, um, and then there will be fine tuning. Uh, same thing with the Ninth Grade Academy, the preliminary designs are in development by KCBA, they're they were waiting on uh work to be done by the civil engineers. Um, as you know, prior to the grant award, the plan was to do GAC before starting Ninth Grade Academy. Um, so this is about two months behind as a result of that, um, now that we're um keeping up with the timeline for the uh Renewing America School. Uh, Renew Renewing Americas Schools Grant. Um, at that point, there will also be bi-weekly meetings to refine the design. And the requirement of the grant has us completing the design by May of twenty twenty-four. So I know those are the upcoming projects. Are there are there any questions related to to those two items uh before we move on to? Status updates of the items that are kind of more in progress. From the board.
Have a question about Jen.
Which uh project uh will go first or will they go concurrently, Green and Cypress at the same time?
So they will be going concurrently. But the schedules kind of look a little different than East Lansdowne and Evans because there are additions on both. Uh, so the additions can be done as long as they don't disrupt. Uh, like volume wise, as long as they don't disrupt instruction, um, so they're gonna look and feel a little bit different. Uh, but that's not ironed out completely yet until we get designs and then they go into planning and things like that. So it's too soon to speak on that for sure. Um, but it might look and feel a little bit different.
Thank you.
Uh, what, dear?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So my question, I have two questions. One was who would be the committee that would sit on for? Both of these uh for for all three projects? Would it be the property committee or would you have subcommittees? And who would those people include? And my second question is. Where did we, how did we come to the next phase of where we are now in terms of projects when? We also had the high school that we had to move on as well.
Sure. Um, so the they would be uh subcommittees for GAC would be Jan um and Miss Boykins. As well, and then for um Ninth Grade Academy, it would be or Cypress Street, I guess, if we're going to um. Continue with the facilities master plan, it would be um, Mr. Richardson, I believe, and and Jan, and I'm not sure if Miss Boykins is also a part of that.
Yes, yes, I am. And then also, uh, Mister Colahan, our same, you know, our same subcommittee meeting. I mean, subcommittee members that we have on our Wednesdays after the meeting occur, uh, we would include those same people. So Miss Richardson, uh, Mister Colahan, myself, Mister Tong, um, those are the people. And then also, we have Mister Ray coming for her, but I don't know if he'll be a part of the high school in um Ninth Grade Academy. Mister Tong would have to make that decision.
So if if I'm not mistaken, it was the the two district regional members that were assigned to each school would be in.
Yes, correct. Thank you, Mister Kaufman. Yep.
Could I be on the high school committee?
Uh, Jane, that I could think that would be. Uh, you're muted, Jen.
No, I'm unmuted.
No, Jan, Jan, sorry.
Sorry.
I I believe so. Yeah, I just go ahead. That's not my decision. Um, and then also, you know, representatives from each building that know the building well and and site people from academic side and things like that. Um, which have been identified. Um, are there any other additional questions before we move on to project updates? Okay, so here's the uh Evans Elementary update. Um, I've attached two pictures from the project. Um, this kind of just demonstrates the cabinetry work in the sink that was put in for ADA compliance. Um, you can also kind of see the floor as part of that in the classroom as well as the lighting up here. Um, so those are all new items uh as a result of the summer work. And then in the new, the new secure vestibule, um, so this is all new and this is the secure entry. Um, that visitors will enter through with the SSO window right here um to verify um. You know, identity of people who should be there um to ensure the safety of our children. Um, here's a long list of items completed. I'm not gonna go line by line um. Because everybody has access to the presentation now. But that's kind of what was completed throughout the summer. Um, eighty percent of the floor, so if you walk the building, there still are some areas like the the principal's office. It's still not done um in the library. Um, generally, I believe all the classrooms and hallways have been done though. Sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So I had one question with that. I know we did the elevator shaft. Has there been a door installed on that? That secures the door until we go to the next phase.
It has been um. Walled off.
Okay.
So I I believe it's uh secured by by plywood and many screws.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Um, so that the, you know, the doorway is there, but you can't accidentally get into the shaft at this point. Uh, so work to be completed during the academic year um during second shift would be to finalize the installation of classroom doors. Uh, replace windows, window sills, and the HVAC louvers, uh boiler room upgrades. Uh, complete the elevator shaft through the roof. Switch gear, secondary power wire, generator, and energize the new electrical service. And then the the final work to be done in summer of twenty twenty-four would be to install the actual elevator itself. Um, new ceilings in the corridors, uh, multi-room, multipurpose room acoustic walls treatment. Complete the HVAC, geez, HVAC equipment, uh, installation and all electrical systems needed to uh install that system. Any any questions before we move on to East Lansdowne? Sorry, go ahead, Jen.
Um, sorry, it took me a second to look at that Evans picture of the new entrance. Does the? SSO have a window or something or does or suppose like a microphone outside? Like, how do people show their ID? Do they just put it up against the window?
Cause so so at this point, um, the proper window didn't come in in time, so there's a temporary full window, um, but there should be a slotted window. Uh, however, just to make sure it was secure, they did install a temporary solid window um. And that should be replaced as soon as it comes in.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Uh, any other additional questions about Evans before we move on to East Lansdowne?
Bob, sorry, one quick question. With the um with the classrooms, with the revamping, did they totally remove the cubbies for the students or are those still present somewhere else in the room?
Are you referring to where they hung their jackets and things like that? So those are those are still intact.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
However, in the in the kindergarten rooms, if I'm not mistaken, there are the old cubbies are still there until the new cubbies come in. And then they so they should in theory should be replaced. Um, I believe that's gonna happen next summer. Uh, for East Lansdowne, uh, linked in two pictures, uh, one is of the hallway to show the new lighting that was installed. As you can see, the it brings a new brightness to the hallway. Um, and the the other one is the. Front entrance, so you can see the this is all new steps and these are the temporary railings that were in place because the new the um final railings have not come in. And if from where this picture is taken behind them, the ADA accessible ramp. Is how you would get up to this platform. Um, so now it is an ADA accessible entrance.
So Bob, I do have a question here. Uh, you know, having an ADA compliant uh access way. Do do the doors have a button to open them automatically?
Not at this time. And I'm not sure if it's in the scope. I have to I have to look at, I have to confer with Darnell and look at the drawings to make sure um to give you a first definite answer, but.
All right. Thank you.
What do you, I don't know if you were trying to talk, but you went on mute.
No, I was just saying, I don't believe in none of our doors, I believe, have access with ADA push button.
No, not not a, and again, like I said, I can't remember if that was included in in the scope, um, but none of the doors at the other schools I can confirm have have that as well.
All right, at at East Lansdowne, you still push the button and they buzz you in, you still have to manually open the door.
So again, here's the the list of items that were completed. I don't wanna I don't wanna read it to everybody, um, so you can read so you can read it at your own time. Um, I don't wanna keep up as much time as possible. Um, for the work to be completed during the academic year. Um, the installation of any remaining light fixtures that were on back order. Again, classroom doors upon delivery. And finalizing the remaining installation of any ceiling tiles that were not um updated with the light fixtures, placements of windows. Um, woodwork in the corridor, boiler room upgrades, complete the elevator shaft, switchgear, power wire, generator. Electrical service, and that will all be done second shift during the academic year. And over summer break, they will install the new elevator, complete the first and second floor toilet room upgrades. Classroom per perimeter floor tile, excuse me, um, new cabinets in the classroom, the digital wall covering in the main corridor. The supply duct in the gym, the HVAC equipment and related electrical systems as necessary. To be completed in the summer of twenty twenty-four. There any questions regarding East Lansdowne? And the work to be completed. Okay, we'll move on to the athletic complex. Updated, I dropped in a bunch of pictures, some from today, some from the game and and some from when we did the light testing, um, so you could see the stadium. Lit when when there's no one in attendance. Um, you know, this is the the final drone shot as of, no, I shouldn't say final, the drone shot of this morning uh with the work completed to date. And just another angle with parking lot. Baseball and softball field. So visitor parking lot and baseball softball parking lot. Couple from the game. And then how the field looks at night, um, kind of under the lights when they were doing the light testing to ensure that there was sufficient coverage. Okay, so um, I know many of you were in attendance for football game on Friday night. While it was operational, there's still wrap-up items and outstanding items that need to uh finalize. The project, including the installation of the PA system, uh, press box furniture, the golf cart that has the capacity to maintain the field. Uh, finishing the ticket booth, the countertop installation and the power to the visitor parking lot lighting. Uh, we also wanted to mention the Mid-Atlantic internship program that happened over the summer um. For students, completed a total of seven hundred and seventy-six hours at a wage of fifteen dollars per hour. Um, it was administered. Administered by Dram, who is the employee who provides us with the drone shots. Here's a summary of the position and and what all they were trying to accomplish, as well as the the different job locations where they had the students um. Work and their internship objectives. Uh, most of their function and responsibilities included like assisting in site prep, uh, installing temporary protection, clearing debris, monitoring, helping install safety barriers. Assisting in construction demolition, handling construction materials, working alongside the skilled trade people in various uh tasks. Um, getting exposure to construction equipment as well as um learning site maintenance and site organization. One of the students was also provided an opportunity to to work with Wilkson Apex Engineering, uh, Adetola Ade. And she worked there on Tuesdays and Thursdays in addition to her project uh participation in the construction spite sites. Um, so she would, they were also um exposed to uh the engineering side of things as well. Um, so we kind of wanted to just give an update of what was accomplished with the students over the summer um as well as the project itself.
I was gonna ask, how many students participated in the internship exactly?
Four.
Four. Now, is there a way for us to do somewhat of a recap to highlight those four students that participated in so that way the community knows? You know, that process.
Sure. Um, are you thinking at the full board meeting, you mean?
Right, if we could just, yes, just if we could just highlight those students and maybe, you know, either have them share. Their experience, or it doesn't have to be at a board meeting, or if they would like to share it on paper, just some way that we could highlight their participation in the internship.
Uh, and to take you back off of that, Wadia, we did, we did show those students um in our board meeting before. Uh, who was chosen, we did, we at our board meeting, we showed, we had the list of the names and everything at our board meeting, but I think that uh giving a review. Uh, would be good, uh, and it'll also be good for Mid-Atlantic and also show like, you know, what we do as a district when dealing with um contractors and things like that. I think it will be great to do that.
Okay, um, yeah, I can get with our team and and see uh what we can do to highlight those the students. Um, Jennifer.
Uh, I really appreciate the internship opportunity for our students. Um, it's really stellar and I'm appreciative to our staff and our contractors that uh got that done. And a a special shout out to Mister Deans, uh, who made uh the first night of our new facility go swimmingly. Um, it looks gorgeous. If you have not been there yet, uh, do a drive-by because it is uh goosebump worthy. Uh, to say, so, um, thank you, Mister Deans.
Dan, I think I can turn it back to you at this point. Um. Don't know, there's discussion items.
Thank you, Mister Kaufman. Uh, I do also want to echo that, uh, this was an interest. This is a great opportunity for our students. Um, you know, the number of hours that they worked and the locations, I think that's wonderful. Uh, I don't know if we could also get a couple of them to like, you know, make a little this like video to highlight their experience and, you know, that's something we could share. Hoping that we could, you know, expand on this process with other vendors and other um students, um, but that that's a thought. Um, you guys do it with it what you can. But then with that, I want to open the floor to board members and see if there are any questions or concerns about the information you've heard tonight.
So I just have a few things. Um, so uh just, one, I do want to echo what Jen said. Um, I have taken this before, you know, Darnell. Um, and also Mister Kaufman, um, uh, just about the work that you guys have been doing. Um, and also Dr. B Coates. I know that it's really a lot, you know, with regard to this whole construction piece, but just wanna say thank you for all the energy and, you know, I I wanna tell the board this. Um, me and Darnell, we get calls uh about, you know, student athletes or students or community members. That are in Kerr, and let me tell you, I drive up there, but also Darnell will go up there and he will stand up there and wait. To make sure everybody, nobody's in on on the field, and and if he has it in, somebody gives him a problem, he'll call the police. But what I'm saying is, he's very dedicated to his job and everybody's not available to do that. But he'll be up there all night. There's times where it was nine, ten o'clock at night and he'll, I say, Darnell, somebody's up there right now. He'll get up there, but I just wanna say like that takes a lot and I appreciate that, Darnell, because. Everybody, you know, this is a village and everybody has to take care of the baby and I look at Kerr as the baby, you know, and. I know you're not homegrown from here, but may you act like it because you really get up there and you really help out. Same thing with you, Mister Kaufman, so I just wanna say thank you to your whole team that is really, really keeping an eye on that and I know we're trying to. Um, get the security cameras. That was another thing I had to ask. Um, one thing on my list, is the security cameras coming up this week or what's the update on that?
So I'll I'll defer to Darnell on that one. It's against daily updates.
Yeah, but so we will, we actually will be on, um, the security updates, our security cameras are going in this week as we speak. Um, they worked over the weekend, past week to make sure that all the final wiring was due, so all the equipment is in, most equipment is on site. We expect to have all of our security cameras as well as our secure entry no later than Tuesday of next week. If there's gonna be any other delays with that, we will inform everyone appropriately, but we do expect for everything to be completed by Tuesday of next week.
Awesome. Um, I also just wanted to bring up two things. Um, if you could just put this on your radar, um, at Bell Avenue, um, room B five in the basement. Uh, room B five at Bell Avenue in the basement. Um, I was, I just came from back to school night at Bell and I've been there a couple of times. Um. The room is very moist to the point where the uh, the chalk, not the chalkboard, but the board, the whiteboard that the teacher is utilizing. Has collected so much moisture that is rippling. Um, so I noticed was something that we were kind of dealing with at East Lansdowne with rooms collecting water. Or it was moisture. Um, also, there is a a pungent smell. Um, so I just wanted to ask if we could please, please take a look at that. Um, I talked to one of the teachers today who's in that room. Um, and yeah, I'll talk to you more offline, but if we could just take a look at that. And see what we can do uh for room B five. Um, also, um, can someone um give, I know Dr. V Coats has spoke on this briefly, but um. I just wanna know how we got to the point where, you know, we start school and like all of our buildings, all of the air is, even buildings with air, like I just wanna know. I know it's not you guys, I just wanna know what Airmark is doing because I know we're waiting for like, uh, Pinewood Middle School, we're waiting for pieces. Um, I just, I don't know, I just feel like it's such an inconvenience. I was at Pinewood Middle yesterday. And um, the way that they have to maneuver because of no air is um, is kind of, you know, a little insane and I know this week it's getting cooler. But I just hope that whatever the issue is, that we can rectify this for the startup of next year, you know, um. I don't know what's going on, but uh, you know, just wanna get an update on where we are with air.
Sure, um, and I I can kind of address that at a high level. So Airmark did bring on an additional HVAC tech um to assist with those items. As well as we're looking into um kind of like a service agreement with the the HVAC company that we use to bring in on the bigger problems instead of paying piecemeal. Um, cause it's, you know, all of our systems are are getting old and it's starting to get um kind of costly, so we're trying to look into that to see if it'll be cost-saving and then also on top of that. They'll start doing preventative ma- maintenance instead of reactionary maintenance. Um, so both those two things in tandem will will kind of help us address the issues ahead of time and and so that we won't be reactive like we were this year.
So Mister Kaufman, uh, does Airmark have a preventative maintenance um schedule that they're providing to you on a regular basis? For the equipment that they oversee in our building?
Um, so I know Darnell has been meeting with them over the summer, um, so you can give a quick update on that.
Yeah, so we actually, um, Miss Boykins, we're in a process of of developing um and adjusting the preventative maintenance plan. Um, it's it's to be very frank, it's not a plan that has been upkept over time. Um, so it will take, it's gonna take us some time, but we are developing, but part of us. Engaging Oliver, engaging some of the other vendors is because we need to get a true state of what our systems are across our district. So that we can have a really good understanding of what the what the PM will look like. So as part of this, um, and getting into these um maintenance contracts with our boy, with the boiler, with our boilers, with our HVAC system. So that we can actually put together a true preventive maintenance plans. So the short answer is yes, we are working to develop it because the current one that we have is not is not um. Is out of date.
And and thank you for being, um, you know, thank you for be honest, honest about that. What what bothers me and I'll just have to say this, you know, not being rude, it's just, Airmark has been with us for so long. And that is something that every district should have is a preventative maintenance plan. Now, we would not have found ourselves in this situation with all of our buildings losing air at one time if we would have known the status of each HVAC system as time went on. So like, nothing to you or Mister Kaufman is just like, eh, um, Airmark should have been, they should have been on it, you know, and that and that disappoints me and it makes me wanna look at. How they're handling their maintenance, um, maintenance for us in their program.
So, Miss Boykins, I definitely would love an opportunity to talk more offline. I think one of the, I think. I think one of the other challenges is is that they have experienced some transition or in their division as well over the last couple of years. Um, it does, it does appear to be there is some more stable, um, stable staffing and we do have a good synergy going on right now. Again, um, not negating anything that's happened prior to now, but understanding that we do have an energy around, um. Uh, energy around this process moving forward, so I think we will have an opportunity moving forward to get us in a place where we are um. Being on top of issues and being more proactive instead of reactive.
Okay, thank you very much for that, and I'm not trying to be a complainer. I know you just got in, but it's just something that I feel like before you, we had Airmark here and. I just expected for them to have that. The last thing I just wanna put up and just say, Darnell, the floor looks great at Pinewood Middle School. Um, I was over there, it's hearing, um, school board directors, you gotta get over there, it's like a white oak, it really is nice. Um. The only thing that you're missing, and I don't know if you know that you're missing this, you have no signage on the floor. Um, so for P I double A, that may be an issue because you're supposed to have like the school logo. Um, and for like the National High School Federation, um, you're, you need to have the logo somewhere on the floor, um, because we are a. Not like a rec a rec league, you know, so um, you may wanna look into that because when teams come, like our logo usually is in the center. Um, or something on the baseline to show, um, so, but it really looks nice and I I'm just very thankful that you have covered the leaks in the in the roof. And then also the the uh floor, the floor looks really nice. So thank you for all your efforts, both of you on that.
And me and Mister Kaufman saw that today and we noticed this, so I'm glad that we're on the same page. We're gonna reach out to the um, reach out to the company as well. Um, but one more thing I wanna highlight is that the new, uh, Miss Boykins, the new contract also has several accounted with Airmark, just to go backwards. The new contract also has several levels of accountability built into it, um, that we are following from both uh maintenance and a facility side. So we actually will be following all of those things um in this new contract moving forward.
Okay, thank you, and that's good to know, thank you very much for that.
And Mr. Kaufman, um, as relates to, um, can I say, uh, or Mr. Tong, one more thing about the Pinwood leaks? So, um, so we actually have thought that we addressed all of the leaks in the middle school gym. Um, but we have learned that we actually have not. Um, so what's happening and what has happened is that we have. The leaks that we were well, very much well aware of, we close up those leaks, but the way of the roof, as you all know, that this roof is more. Like a half of a dome roof, um, so. So the roof actually moved this, the leaks are actually moving their way down. So this is something that me and Mr. Kaufman are looking into immediately, and we will be coming back to this committee about what the next step should be to address the. Full roof issue.
Yep, and, and this was communicated in the last board update, I believe, and we will continue to keep it in there until. We can bring it to the committee for a potential recommendation to see how we should proceed. Um, but just, just so you know, we will continue to, to put it in that update as well.
I forgot one more thing, um, the, at Pinwood Middle School, uh, due to the HVAC, uh, if you could let. Airmark also know, uh, the, I guess this air conditioner is leaking in the hallways, I don't know if you know that already, but. I was there yesterday, and like, as, as I was walking through the hallway, uh, was like water coming out the ceiling, so.
So Ms. Boykins, thank you for that, so we actually have already spoken with Airmark, we made sure the facilities director as well as the general manager of Airmark. Met directly with the assistant principal as well as the principal, they are spending an additional amount of time this month. Focusing on the, a number of issues that we want with, um, want to get handled with, um, Pinwood Middle School. So just so you all know for the record, Pinwood Middle School is a primary focus for us, of us for the next, for the rest of this month. And we'll adjust at the end of this month about what our next step should be with the school.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boykins. For those questions and concerns and, and, um, observations. Uh, any other board members have any other comments? Thoughts?
I just had one, um, question, um, in regards to Kerr Field. If we could get a copy of the hot list that they say that there, if everything's due for completion for next week, if we could have a hot list, just. Um, so we could review. Um, and compare it to the list of things that, one, we noticed, you know, being there over the weekend as well as. Some of the things that they already identified that they had to get done, that would be great.
Alright. Thank you, Ms. Ivory.
I'll likely try and communicate that in the board update if, um, we can get that turned around quick enough from Darnell, if not, I will, uh, send it to this committee itself.
Thank you, Bob. Any other board members have any thoughts and comments?
I have a question again, um, as far as the security there at Kerr Field. I know you say we're gonna get the security cameras and gates a lot, is there any? Measures in place for manpower to secure that field? It's a gorgeous field, I mean, we wanna do all we can to keep it the way it is. So is there manpower that's gonna be there on the ground to, uh? You know, monitor that field?
Um, so. Mr. Kaufman, would you like me to answer? Yes, so Ms. Richardson, thank you for that question, are, just for clarity, are you, are you talking about during events or while events are not occurring?
While events are not occurring.
Yeah, so, um, from a manpower perspective, the, the answer is right now, we will not have WPSD personnel on site. Um, while, um, events are not occurring, however, one of the, um, one of the things that, uh, this board sought. Um, had to foresight and thinking was making sure that the surveillance system is upgraded to a high capacity. So the surveillance system that we are in, or we are inputting, will have the Yaton Police Department. Give them the ability to monitor the site twenty-four seven through their dispatchers. So them monitoring the site twenty-four seven through their dispatchers, they will be able to see if anything is occurring on the site. And then dispatch police accordingly, they also have included Kerr Field as a part of their regular routine drives. So, um, as Ms. Boykin stated earlier, they, um, are on speed dial with us, but they also have had instances in which in their own routine have. Um, allow, have kicked people off our field, for lack of a better term, while we're, while we're under construction. Um, so while we won't have physical manpower, we do expect to have significant coverage. Um, we also will have access control points where people won't be able to enter without a badge or a code. Um, and everything else patlocked, um, at the site.
Okay.
Are incursions onto the field after hours occurring now?
Yes, sir, um, not as frequently as they were prior to us getting all of the gating in. Um, and, and prior to us getting all the gating in and getting everything patlocked, I actually do not believe that we've had any additional incur. Um, incursions since we got all of the gating in.
So those incursions are not going over the fence?
No, they're not.
Thank you.
Darnell, I just have one question on that, so the cameras, right, once we have the camera set up. Is this somebody physically watching it, like, like, for instance, I know this is crazy, but it's like Yaton Police. Watching the cameras, or like, do we have someone watching cameras, or the cameras are just up there? If somebody does something, we can review and go back and say, okay, this happened during this time.
So, I, I'm, I don't wanna speak out of turn, I wanna get more information on the cameras, um, to, so it's, it, it will be a live feed that we all, that we can always use. But I also don't, my, my, if my recollection, and, um, please don't quote me. But my recollection of the cameras that we purchased are motion, are motion activated, and they're being calibrated in a way that is not gonna react to. To animals, but it'll react to human beings, um, so any instance that a, that a camera is triggered, if you will. Um, it will, it will spark a camera or spark a notification, but let me go back and get clarification, and then I'll, um. We'll report back to this committee through Mr. Kaufman.
Okay, thank you for that.
Any other board member questions? Alright, not hearing any or seeing any, I'm gonna open the floor to the public, does the public have any questions or comments from what they've heard tonight? I don't see any hands. Give them a moment, sometimes it takes a while to get the hands going in there, just wanna make sure. Alright, I don't see any hands. So I wanna thank everybody for their participation tonight and their, um, thoughts and considerations. Uh, we will continue this conversation, and I wanna thank everyone for joining tonight and see you at the next. Uh, property meeting October fourth, I believe.